Okay, it is noon o'clock, so I want to call to order this meeting, this emergency meeting of the Talakaw City Council. Appreciate you all for being here. Could we have roll call please, please? Councilor Long?
Here.
Councilor Crumbs?
Councilor Hires?
Here.
Councilor Rappel?
Yes, here.
Okay, and we have one item on our agenda for today. It is discussion and possible action related to special elections called for November 3rd, 2020, and/or amend or repeal resolution 081720-K. So, as you are aware, we have some propositions from our Charter Review Committee that we had asked to go on the ballot for November 3rd. Council, you approved that through resolution. And we have come to our attention that the publications were not made as required by our charter, nor as required by the state court processes. So, we are here to discuss how we want to move forward. My understanding in talking with Ms. Rozell from the Election Board is that we can proceed with the election. Some ballots have already gone out and have been returned, knowing that the results of the election are questionable and can be challenged. Or we can vote to rescind the resolution, at which point, once we provide that information to the Election Board, they would quit distributing ballots and only return those that are out. So, that is the question before us. And we have Peggy Glenn, who's the Chair of the Review Committee, here. And Peggy, I think you've had some input from your committee.
That is correct. So, we brought this to the committee's attention on Friday when the city notified us in our patron. I sent it out to our committee members. I've heard back from all but two, what are my hair is new. The other who has had a death in her immediate family. So, with one exception, the remaining eight have, so it'd be seven, I guess. Seven were in favor of allowing it to proceed, mainly to get the sense of the city and the voters on those specific propositions. And one did have, was in favor of pulling the ballot.
Okay, so that's where we see.
Okay, so I have a question. So, this is, I think this is slightly different than the conversation that, you know, that we had had, but, so you're saying that the ballots, the ballots, there would be no change to the ballot, potentially, one option is no change to the ballots. Folks in the community still vote on these propositions? And then we wait to see if, if those results, is that, was that what you said? Like, if, if the results, if somebody challenges it? Or is it just basically a, a survey?
That is a legal decision that, you know, basically, what I put to the committee is, do we want to go ahead with the vote, knowing that it is challengeable?
That's right. That's what you're saying, challengeable. So, if, so you're saying potentially, potentially, if nobody cha, if nobody was to challenge it, then if we could still proceed?
I, yeah, I believe we could. I suspect that there will be a challenge, just because it was brought to our attention.
Okay, and so, then I pass that question to you, B.J. If it is, once it is challenged, then, because it seems like we went through this, the city of Talakaw went through this back in 2000, no, 2000?
In Mayor Cook's term with the...
With the Astro grass on the Gable field.
Correct.
And so, is there any cost associated with the challenge from the cities, from the city standpoint? I mean, is that going to cost, are we, we're...
If you try to defend it, then sure, but that wouldn't be advisable, because we'll lose.
Okay.
I can't do that, B.J.
You take it to, it's a survey. And so, really, we're just, we're getting the temperature of the people. And there, I believe, these questions are already attached to other things that are properly on the ballot, Mayor?
It is a separate sheet of paper.
Is it? Okay. Because I was figuring there would be a cost to removing those and reprinting, but just use it as a survey would be, I would, I would not try to defend it, because...
Okay, that was my question.
You'd just be spinning your wheels in a citizen's mind.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I think, I said in my email back to you, I said, you know, we don't get a dress rehearsal for a general election, and this would be a great polling tool, just to use it, and we're paying for it anyway. We might as well go ahead and let it go, and there's already some bugs in, so we'll just let everybody say what they want.
How much did we pay for the election? Someone asked me that, and I didn't know the number.
I think it's five grand, it's a change between three and five.
Okay, okay.
That's what I can give you.
And I, and I know I didn't reply to Peggy, and I haven't read through all those emails I saw this morning, there was a bunch that had flooded through. I agree with Dower, that, I mean, it's already out there, it's published, we'd at least get a, an expensive pre-polling to know that when we proceed with the changes that we still have to hopefully incorporate in the future, this would be a good opportunity, yes, if this is what the people want. I know it's going to be very frustrating to the public. And it's confusing, I mean, it's even confusing to those of us who are on the committee. And I do want to thank you, Peggy, and Carol, and all the people on the committee, you guys put a bunch of work into this. I know there was a lot of nights and a lot of weekends and a lot of time, and thank you guys, I mean, really.
Well, and you were right there with us, you and Dower.
Well, you, yeah, but you guys, you guys did extras, so thank you guys for that, we appreciate that, and I know this is frustrating, but, I think we should, we should go ahead and let them finish, and then see, and then that'll help us make decisions. Out of the committee, some of the other things that we also wanted to see changed in the city, we'll know if we can feasibly, logistically do it, and most importantly, do the people want us to do it.
Yes, correct.
Hey Peggy, can you walk us through, before we make a motion on it, is, just, can you kind of walk us through what this does, what the change in timeline of what this, you know, how this impacts the change in our timeline from, I mean, for example, in February, if, you know, if we decided to put this back on the ballot in February, if the street commissioner now is an elected position that was, you know, would, could have potentially not been on there as an elected position for February, but now, is it possible that we can have an election for a street commissioner on the ballot at the same time we have this proposition saying that we're not going to elect, in the future, we're not going to elect it, so then that it wouldn't take effect for four more years? Does that, walk us through the timeline on those, please?
Yeah, so you could make it on the ballot, my understanding, and, and again, this is stuff we have to vet through the attorney, but my understanding is, you could have people file for the, the two positions, that the city treasurer and the street commissioner, that we have put on the proposition as being appointed instead of elected. They could file for those offices in December, they would be on the ballot in February, you could have the, the proposition say that it takes precedence over any election, and it goes into effect immediately. But talk about confusing the voters.
So, on the very same night, they are elected, they're also...
Congratulations! Congratulations, you know, you're 37 minutes.
You've spent too much on your campaign. I mean, I guess technically, they wouldn't go into office until May, so...
That's right. So, the proposition would take, like, it would be enforced or enforceable before then.
So, the risk is potentially, if you were filing for those positions, the timeline, the money?
Well, and I, and I think back to what we had talked about, and what, it seems like we're all kind of leaning, I say, I won't speak for the group, but what some of us are leading to is gathering some of that data, so that on November the 4th, that data, we can look at it and say, you know, well, it says that, you know, 62% of the people in Talakaw feel comfortable having a hired street commissioner as opposed to an elected street commissioner, so then moving forward, okay, okay.
It's a very expensive survey, one to survey.
And we, we've already paid for it.
Yeah, we paid for it. We bought the cars to drive it.
My only, my only thing that I would add to the conversation is, of course, I'll go with, you know, how the group feels, and I thank the committee immensely for all of their work that they've done. But I would just say, and maybe I'm saying out loud, and some things I shouldn't say, but the November election is much different...
That's right.
...than the February election, and the electorate of the two.
Your...
And so, one poll, so by calling this, it doesn't necessarily really equate to a poll of what would happen in a February election, and it could, it could also have the potential of doing the opposite of what we would want to happen in an election result. An unofficial polled election result of November could adversely affect what the election result, the result in February would look like.
That's right.
The gambit that we brought in by doing it that way.
Well, and with that said, and with that said, Stephen, I think one thing that we have to take into consideration is, this is, this is hu, I mean, this is huge, this is much bigger than backwards facing benches, I mean, this is, this is a change in our constitution, and this is a change in our, in our charter, which for the most part, the general public, you know, whatever, but I think, you know, I won't say blessing in disguise, but I think at least having this on, having this on the ballot, so that people say, 50% of the people that show up to vote, they go, well, what is all this? You know, whether that comes out in the paper, or whether it's been on social media, or whether your committee has put it out, you put it out publicly, you know, I'd just feel like, a majority, or at least half of the people are going to look at this page, and they're going to go, what is, you know, I don't know anything about these five propositions in the city. So, at least, if we're getting that out there to them now, and if those same items potentially appear on the February ballot, at least they're kind of, regardless of, you know, the volume, the volume in November compared to the volume in February, at least they have that, you know, kind of set in the back of their mind, like, well, I didn't do any, you know, I didn't look into this, I didn't know anything about this, I didn't research this. And so, I think maybe, you know, potentially is a blessing in disguise, so that the people can say, going into February, they can't say, well, I didn't know anything about this, or I didn't see, I've never seen this before. So, I think there's some benefit into leaving it on there, in my mind.
Yeah, Stephen, you bring up a very, sorry, Councilor Hires, you made up a very good point. And that, you know, we wanted on the November ballot, so that more people would see it, think about it, vote on it. And, you know, we're still getting that opportunity, as Counselor Rappel said, it could, you know, fire up people who are opposed to however the poll, as, as you mentioned, however the poll ends up going. But, you know, for the most part, I think interest in city issues doesn't happen often, and when it does, if it gets people to the polls, and gets them to vote, and, and think about our city, and how these proposals are going to impact our city, and make it more representative of it compared to 1940, then, then I think we're not losing.
Yeah, I'd absolutely agree with that.
Do we have anyone else in the, Dr. Uso, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Oh my gosh, I didn't even recognize, I was wondering.
I'm Dr. John Deese, oh, and I have the complexion, it's issue, but we didn't have a city forum or anything, we had a special committee to handle this particular thing, I have public input as general. So, my recommendation is that you remove the item, and have it set aside, okay, and have it in general election like we would for the mayor. I think that would keep a lot of litigation, and potential litigation at risk. I guess it's an illegal thing, would it be more efficient to rescind the ordinance, and have it in general election for the mayor, with a broader perspective of people will be voting as opposed to just the new two city councils that are coming up?
More efficient?
I don't know.
I don't see how efficiency related to either one of those two scenarios.
I believe the election is going to cost us the same amount either way, so as far as if you're talking economically, it's going to cost the city the same amount.
One of the items on the agenda, what was the last word that you used on the agenda after the meeting?
Are you talking about for today's meeting, John?
No, the agenda, that's posted out, sorry.
The last word is adjourned, but, the last...
I mean, amend and/or repeal?
No, not that, the post, the meeting, the purpose of the meeting.
Today's meeting, the meeting agenda?
There's like one sentence regarding the ordinance, right?
Right, it says...
Amend or repeal.
Yeah. Amend or repeal resolution 81720-A.
This is what's posted.
Does anyone have a copy of the ordinance that's posted outside on the bulletin board?
Here's the ordinance, is what you're talking about, John?
No, the, the meeting, the purpose of the meeting.
Like, here's the meeting agenda.
It's this.
That we've all got today, this is what got posted.
Okay, it says here, amend or repeal.
Right.
Right.
And that's what we're discussing, whether we're going to amend or repeal.
Okay, thank you.
And part of that amendment could be proceeding.
Thank you, John. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to add?
Yes, sir?
I settled the case that you were talking about, when I became the city attorney. The error occurred before my, my time with the city, and fortunately, in issue of its improvements, as needed, I appear in an effort to address what I see are two facial fatalities that have occurred recently. Number one is the publication of the election. I knew back in August, when it was published prematurely, it was done incorrectly. I know whose fault it is, and if anyone desires my input on that, I'm happy to provide that, should you decide to meet with me later. The city has a responsibility now to recover the cost of the publication, the cost of the election, by way of indemnity from the party who is responsible for that. That concludes my comments on that issue. Secondly, this meeting today was posted as an emergency meeting of the city council. To my knowledge, at least in my memory, the city of Talakaw has never had an emergency meeting, and I'll tell you why. Emergency meetings are reserved for extraordinary tragedies that occur. For example, the Murrah building bombing, 9/11, the tornado that mowed through Moore, Oklahoma in 1999, catastrophic flooding. Let me quote from the Open Meeting Act, and if all of you elected officials don't have this, someone has been remiss in not supplying it for you. I mean, this is like, if you're in a Bible study group, and you don't have the good book, this is what you need to be an elected official, is a copy of the Open Meeting and Open Records Quoting from Title 25, Section 5, it defines emergency meeting. Emergency meeting means any meeting called for the purpose of dealing with an emergency. Four purposes of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, an emergency is defined as a situation involving injury to persons. We don't have that. Injury and damage to public or personal property, we don't have that. Or immediate financial loss. It has been discussed today, that the taking of this straw poll is not going to cost the city any more money. Now, here's another problem with this meeting, and why I will implore the council not to take any action of any sort today. The notice of the meeting was published, posted. At 7:40 Friday night. An emergency meeting has no preset notification timeframe, for the obvious reason that if you have a bombing, you need to meet right away. If you have a tornado, you need to meet right away. And so, without having qualified under Section 5, under the definition of emergency meeting, then if this is not an emergency meeting, and I submit it is not, it does not qualify, it can only be a special meeting. As such, a special meeting would have to have been convened 7:43 this evening, or after. I'm going to assume that the material and the agenda is correct, that the Election Board has to be notified one day before the voting occurs. That being the case, since this would only qualify under the auspices of a special meeting, there's not enough time, before 7:00 a.m. on Thursday, when people are allowed to start showing up in person and voting. So, my conclusion is that this meeting does not qualify as an emergency meeting. There is not enough time to have a special meeting prior to the time limit imposed by the Election Board. The only safe answer is don't do anything. Do not take action, because you're now unnoticed of the infirmity associated with the time limits, the calling, the circumstances. Had this been a special meeting, then it could have occurred tonight, and met the time limit, that you're kind of caught in a switch here, in the sense that now, no actions, permit. I'm happy to take questions.
Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm curious how, if you, the city, by your request, needs to recuperate damages, but you also say that it doesn't qualify because there was no damages.
Well, it doesn't qualify as an emergency meeting, because there are no new damages that could occur. But I'm talking about indemnity, that the responsible, responsible party for the error associated with the incorrect publication leading up to the election forced the city to incur the expenses of the publication and the cost of the election unnecessarily.
Those would be considered damages?
Yeah, well, those are a different type of damages. This, the definition of the emergency meeting is talking about damages that would occur if you didn't have this meeting, and there has not been any demonstration that there are going to be further damages that need to be dealt with as a result of having to have this meeting. So, we're talking apples and oranges in terms of damages.
Seems like a matter of interpretation, but...
It's not. I mean, it's crystal clear right here in the Open Meeting Act, and for what it's worth, I have been a presenter on the Open Meeting and Open Records Act, under the auspices of the Oklahoma Bar Association. And these are classes that are attended by attorneys, so they can keep their law licenses current, similar to what account CPAs, you know, you so have to maintain. And so, I'm simply saying, I know what I'm talking about.
And we appreciate very much that you've brought this to our attention. And, Council, do you have any questions, or who's coming in?
So, if we were to not take any action, things would just go on like...
Well, that's speculation. I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure this issue has ever arisen before. Certainly, the, if ballots are allowed to be cast, it would be a not no result. I mean, the election is infirm, means fatally flawed. I, I haven't done the research, but I personally question whether or not the council, at this late juncture, has the ability to pull that from the election. I would presume to answer that question.
The only way that we can pull this from the election would be to rescind the resolution, and that would take action by the council. If the council did not take action, there would be no way to rescind, and no way to pull it off the ballot.
Right, so that's my point, is that I don't see any safe way of taking any action whatsoever, because this meeting clearly has not met the statutory requirements for an emergency meeting. It could have been a special meeting, but it just would have to have been at 7:00, what was I, 7:43 this evening?
And just to clarify, the reason we thought that it qualified as an emergency meeting is because of the need of the Election Board to have one day at least...
No, I understand that, yeah.
...make modifications to what they were planning to do.
It's just that doesn't qualify, and it's statute as an emergency.
And I appreciate your point on that.
I mean, it, you know, it is a distinction. I'm really younger, I haven't had lunch yet. Personally, that's an emergency. But in the grand scheme of things, I'm more worried about people in third world countries who don't have anything to eat or any capacity to take it ass. That's an emergency. So, anyway, that's my opinion. I have come to this conclusion, because I know how difficult it is to qualify for an emergency meeting, and I would encourage anyone who feels differently than I do, contact the Attorney General's Office, and see what they have to say about what is, what is necessary to qualify for emergency.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Can you add further?
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor, just a suggestion, do we want to take a recess, and then call and contact OMEG and OML real quick, before we all...
I, I want to ask B.J. a couple of questions, real quick.
Sure.
Hey, I think kind of the same thing as I was saying, what's, what happens if we take no action?
I think that's the road you guys are headed down anyways. I think that's the road you guys were headed down anyways, of using this as a, as a survey, which would be no action. So, I mean, I think that's exactly where you were going anyways. I mean, just as far as, as what Park was saying about the notice, uh, before, the money spent on the election was regular spending. It wasn't until we realized that we had notice issues, that now it's a financial loss. So I, I don't think, I think it is kind of up to interpretation a little bit, I think there's, there's plenty of wiggle room there. But the road that you were headed to was no action, which would be to let it proceed as is, and, and use it as a survey. So that's, that's just another reason to head down the road you were going.
Okay, thank you. I won't argue with anyone.
Okay. So, hearing nothing from any of the council, I, I would like to say something.
Yes, ma'am?
I wanted to kind of point out a couple of suggestions, maybe, for any upcoming elections, and a recommendation of, um, I have visited with other cities, other attorneys over the last few days, because of all of this. And typical practice across the state is not to just have one person in charge of overseeing the elections, especially, you know, these types of elections, with charter change and so forth. It's very important that, you know, everything is met. I understood that I was following direction, I've done about three elections in my term, two or three, and this one, like Counselor Hyer said, is a little different. And so, uh, that being said, you know, during the period of, you know, I understand, um, that it was directed, that I was instructed and, you know, directed to publish full list and row, and in fact, I, I did not get that direction. I was in an email, and the email was directly to you from Grant, and you did reply back that you would follow his direction or his lead, or something to that effect. Um, I, my mistake is overs- overlooking that particular email and not following that review to find out what needed to be done, because other elections, like I said, are a little different. And with that time period, I can count over forty emails that just pertain to the election and the election process of, you know, publication, whatever it may be. And that, there's nothing that I can find, or legal can find that states that the city clerk is in charge of publications. And I have done that research. So...
Your recommendation?
My recommendation is to have, if you have a charter review committee, have someone on that to assist in the election. Some of the other cities have the election board. I did reach out to the election board on August eighteenth to ask for direction, I did not get a reply. So, I've done my due diligence, the best that I knew how, and don't feel like I should take the entire heap of everything. I will take some of it, certainly, because, you know, that's, that's fair enough. But I do, I do recommend that in the future, for all elections, that you have more than one person overseeing the processing of the election. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, I appreciate your thoughts. Yes, sir?
Uh, I'm sorry to ask for a second opportunity. I'm worried that my comments may have been misconstrued. I can say unequivocally, it is my legal opinion that the city clerk is not at fault for the error in the pedagogication for this election. It's not your fault.
Thank you, Mark. Hearing nothing from council, we will move on to item number four, which is adjournment, can we move?
Yes.
Motion second, we have a roll call. Counselor Holmes? Counselor Hyer?
Yes.
Counselor Rattler?
I'm staying.
If I have to stay, you can stay.
We live here now. We live here now.